We call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, February 3rd, 2014. Would you all please rise for a brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we ask for guidance and direction as the city council undertakes the affairs of business for the city before us. We are ever mindful that we are in one of the worst winter seasons we've experienced in the last forty years, and we are ever so thankful for the support and continued good work on behalf of all of our city employees and all the challenges that the weather conditions have shown upon them, and we just ask that guidance and safety be shown to them as they continue to pursue their jobs and the continued expectations of bad weather in the days ahead. Tonight also, our hearts are heavy with the news that on January 3rd of this year, we lost one of the more esteemed members of the previous city councils and the person of Charlie Gillonwater. Charlie was killed in an auto accident down in southeastern Missouri on that day, and we are ever mindful of the many good deeds and kindnesses and acts that he performed in his services at the City of Batavia. And we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon his family, who remains after him in what is a tragic set of circumstances. Tonight, we just ask for guidance, and we ask for a lookout for all those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of liberties of the United States of America, and we just ask that guidance be shown upon them and blessings be shown upon them and all others from our country who are serving so ably. We just ask for guidance tonight as we move forward, knowing that we are here to work on behalf of the best interests of the City of Batavia in the days ahead. Amen. Alderman Brown, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Brown?
Here.
Clark?
Here.
ATAC?
Here.
Stark?
Here.
Chansett?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Sparks?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Holman?
Here.
Sam?
Here.
Vassiliyan?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
McFadden?
Here.
As the record reflect, that all fourteen elected members of the city council are present in the counterforce, we obviously have the necessary quorum to conduct business. We will then move to item number four, which are items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda. Alderman Sparks, as Chairman of Governmental Services, do you have this, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. We will not have item number sixteen in executive session. We'll remove that from the agenda.
Everything else remains the same?
Everything else is the same. I move we accept the agenda as revised.
Second.
Move Alderman Sparks, second by Alderman Stark, for the approval of the agenda as amended. Any discussion or additional changes from the council? Kirk, call the roll.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion for the approval of the agenda as presented is fourteen yes, no, no's, none absent. Moving to item number five, then, which is presentation of the consent agenda for this evening. Alderman Sparks, as Chairman of Governmental Services, would you present this, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. Consent agendas as follows. To accept and place on file, A, the Joint Committee of the Whole Minutes for January 14th, 2014; B, the Historic Preservation Commission Minutes for July 8th, July 22nd, November 18th, 2013; and January 13th, 2014; C, the Plan Commission Minutes for November 20th, 2013; D, the November 2013, December 2013 financial reports. The approvals are E, January 31st, 2014 payroll, an amount of $745,045.86; F, the accounts payable check register, an amount of $788,831.72; G, the city council minutes for January 6th, 2014; H, ordinance 14-03, professional wetland services for evaluating condition of best management practices installed on private properties as part of the stormwater permit; I, resolution 14-17-R, authorizing execution of the construction engineering services agreement for federal participation for the Safe Routes to School project for Alice Gustafson, HC Storm, and Rototl Middle School with HR Green; J, resolution 14-18-R, authorizing execution of the local agency agreement for federal participation in Safe Routes to School, Alice Gustafson, HC Storm, and Rototl Middle School, the Illinois Department of Transportation; K, resolution 14-13-R, tax abatement for the year 2013 to pay debt service on $715,000 for general obligation bonds, refunding Series 2012A; resolution 14-14R, tax abatement for the year 2013 to pay debt services on $9120,000 general obligation bond, refunding Series 2013; M, resolution 14-19-R, Main Street and Deer Path Road intersection improvements, approving the intergovernmental agreement with King County; N, ordinance 14-12, annexing city-owned property Brayburn Marsh west of Randall Road. That's consent agenda. I move that we accept it as read.
Second.
Move Alderman Sparks, second by Alderman Stark, for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved, fourteen yes, no, no's, none absent. Okay, moving to item number six, items, matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have any this evening? Okay, moving then to item number seven, which is going to be a recognition, we have a plaque here for many, many years. to present to retiring Fire and Police Commissioner Wyatt George, and chief, will the Fire
Well over thirty years.
Well over thirty years, and Wyatt is one of those folks that, when I used to see him many years ago, he would always have something to offer about Batavia, and most of it was and Police Chief maybe join me up at the podium? Wyatt, if you would come forward, please. always very positive, and I always was trying, interested in trying to get him involved in Well, this is one of those moments where we get to tell stories about one of our citizens. the city government, but for the first few years, he had business career demands on him and whatever, so finally, we had an opening on the Fire and Police Commission, and I called him and kind of poured out my heart and soul to him and said, I really needed to have somebody come on the Fire and Police Commission, and he consented to come, and you've now been there, what, how many years were you on?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. So, we got our money's worth out of Wyatt. Although, when you're a Fire and Police Commissioner, you're not paid anything, you just give it all in sweat equity and wisdom and good efforts, and I think that I certainly am supported by the Fire and Police Chiefs when I say that we thank you for your service, because you truly have, you know, opened our eyes and allowed us to, you know, with hiring of the various candidates for both departments, you made sure it was a very thorough and honest and fair practice policy that we followed, and I think we've, the high talent and the outstanding qualifications of the people we now have working for us in both departments, I think largely, you know, you get a lot of the credit along with the other two commissioners for making sure that Batavia is well served, so. Either one of you gentlemen want to make any comments about Wyatt?
Well, Wyatt, as you know, I've spent the last seven years since I've been here working with you, and as I said to you, you know, individually, you should indeed be proud of the caliber of the men and women who work in that police department, and it's because of your hard work and making sure that nobody's going to be accepted unless they meet the high standards that the Batavia Police Department and the Batavia Fire Department want, you know, so I really enjoyed working with you, and I'm sorry, I'm going to miss you.
Thank you for all the hard work that you've done on the Fire and Police Commission. You've made it a very reputable commission and one that we can be proud of. Thank you.
Okay, and I think we're going to present Wyatt a plaque, which I think maybe you've already seen.
I didn't look.
Oh, okay.
I didn't know.
Okay. We have a plaque that reads, "City of Batavia, City of Energy, Commissioner Wyatt George, in appreciation of fifteen years of dedicated voluntary service to the Batavia Board of Fire and Police Commissioners, September 1998 to September of 2013," and signed by myself as the mayor, and it's a very nice plaque, and hopefully Wyatt, this serves as a thank you again, and.
Thank you very much.
Give you the box so you can put it back in there, but thank you. You want to make some comments?
Actually, I just want to say, I've considered it an honor to be a part of the Police and Fire Commission for the last fifteen years. I think, I would like to say, I felt that it was very successful, I think there were some areas that I think I personally failed in, and one of those areas was, I had hoped by the time I left, we would have people on minorities on the course, we'd have a few more women on board. We had all the support to get them there, we just couldn't find them, which was disappointing. The city has been very open and supportive of those efforts, and I hope that new commission will continue that. I think the police department we have is, I've certainly enjoyed working with everybody, I've enjoyed working with these gentlemen here, and of course, the mayor. I met Mayor Shelkey in 1981. At that time, he was running against a guy who I think we all know, who messes with Archie Bens, right? But, anyway, there are a lot of things that's happened in that fifteen years or that thirty-something years, and I'm happy to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item is the, item eight is the Chamber of Commerce, introduction of new director, and I don't see any of those folks here, so we'll postpone that one until next meeting, I guess. Okay, you've all got a memo from me for the appointment of two new commissioners to the Batavia Historic Preservation Commission, and anybody have any questions or comments on that? If not, I would entertain a motion for the appointments of Belinda Roller of 248 North Lincoln Street and Kurt Hageman of 1233 Violet Lane, as to fill two vacancies currently on the Batavia Historic Preservation Commission, and I'd ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Vassiliyan, second by Alderman Stark, any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
No.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
No.
O'Brien?
No.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Okay, the vote is eleven yes, three no, motions approved. Okay, moving then to item number ten, which is proclamation for National Engineers Week of February 13th to 20th. Who's got this one?
The proclamation is as follows. Whereas engineering services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of and understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of engineering programs such as streets, water, wastewater, stormwater, and development, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and the skill of engineering officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff the engineering department is materially influenced by the people's attitudes and understanding of this importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of the City of Batavia, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the week of February 16th through the 22nd, 2014, as National Engineers Week in the City of Batavia, and I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our engineers and to recognize the contributions which engineering officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Signed, Jeffrey D. Shelkey.
Want to make a motion?
Make a motion, we accept the proclamation as read.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Sparks, second by Alderman Stark, any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion's approved, fourteen yes, no, no's, none absent. In the absence of engineer, no, we have engineer Andrea here, so we will present to you the proclamation on behalf of city council. Do you want to make any comments?
This is something that the city has been doing for the last few years, and we've interacted with the schools to try and introduce children to engineering, and this year, we'll have out our information out in the hallway again, and again, pass the information along to the staff at the middle and high school.
Very good, thank you for your good efforts. Okay, here's a favorite one. Item number eleven, which is ordinance 14-07, ordinance 14-07, the 2014 Prevailing Wage Act adoption ordinance. Alderman Sparks, do you have this one?
Yes. Ordinance 14-07 is the 2014 Prevailing Wage Adoption Act. I don't agree with it, I don't have anything nice to say about it, we have to pass it per the state, so I'll make a motion, we pass ordinance 14-07, the 2014 Prevailing Wage Act.
Second. Move Alderman Sparks, second by Alderman Brown, for the approval of ordinance 14-07, the 2014 Prevailing Wage Act adoption ordinance. Any discussion?
Implications of not passing this as we turn down state money? Ineligible.
It is.
We've become ineligible, so it becomes a problematic issue if the majority of you decide not to do this. Probably would be such a thing as we'd have to revisit it next meeting after the impacts of it started swimming down upon us.
So, the person next to you votes no, you should vote yes.
Well, some of you want, if you want to figure it out, then I'll.
I'm voting no.
We've done that before.
Yeah. So, I don't care how you do it, we just have to pass it. We did, I've voted on this thing a couple more times, so, not that I like it either, but it's, this is a gun-to-your-head deal, so, any other discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Sparks?
No.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
No.
McFadden?
No.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
No.
So, that one was approved by vote of ten yes, four no's, none absent. Okay, moving to item number twelve, which is the Administrator's Report. Mr. McGrath.
Thanks, Mayor. I think about twenty minutes before the meeting, I did send out a memo to everybody, it's the latest update on the Walgreens project, and I apologize, but that's certainly a large project, but we're getting you information as we get it. It's on the agenda tomorrow evening, we don't expect any action tomorrow night, the real, I think, we'll be recommending that you take a vote on at the J.COW of the 11th of February, and then move it on to the 17th for the city council meeting. The memo I sent out today tells you of the progress we made since the last memo I sent out to you, I mentioned a number of issues that we had outstanding, and I'm happy to say that all those issues have been either taken care of or negotiated out to our satisfaction, so it's very important that if you continue to have questions about the project that are, you know, beyond your, you know, your policy values, which conversation will happen here, please get them to me so we can try and get those out to everybody, so everybody can have their questions responded to. We're not planning on having consultants in here tomorrow night, the staff and the developer will be here to answer any questions that you have. I believe that we, we think that we'll have a complete set of documents to send out on Wednesday morning. If you recall, we sent out a draft to you, I believe it was the 28th of January, so you'd get, you know, an idea of how these, how the general agreement looks, and to show you the kinds of comments and the concerns we had about different parts of it, and as I say, most of those have been negotiated out, so we may be able to show you some exhibits tomorrow night to show you how we're dealing with certain issues such as termination. It's unfortunate, we, you know, the whole goal of this is to make this happen, but because it is public money, we do have to, you know, ask all the what, go through the what-if scenarios, you know, what happens if something happens at various stages of the, of the project, so we've, we've come to an agreement on how to handle those things, so we can talk about some of those tomorrow night if you have questions about them. So, definitely major, major progress. As the mayor said, talked about the winter being so severe, I wanted to continue to thank Public Works Personnel, you know, I try and stop them when they go down my block and the plows, and every time I stop them in the morning, well, I'm getting to be afraid that they don't see me, they're pretty, they get pretty tired of this, but they're very dedicated, if you bump into them, you know, daddy-o's when they get a coffee break, and you're there, please go up and, and say hey to them, they're knocking themselves out. I also want to appreciate the employees, you know, it's been pretty, pretty cold out there, and we've asked, we have not shut down in any way, shape, or form, everybody's been, been here, there's some cities who have called off work, and we've just continued to plow through, so to speak, and haven't had any issues, so I appreciate all that. The, the, there's a lot of things going on because it's the beginning of the year, we're trying to get certainly the construction projects going, so the requests for statement of qualifications for the Deer Path Intersection Signals or Roundabout, whatever it ends up being in our partnership with KDOT, those are out now. The request for statement of qualifications for the pedestrian crossings in partnership with IDOT, those are out, and those should be under construction in June, so that's good. The Bike Commission received a Safe Routes to Schools grant, $70,000, they're going to be, the city actually gets the grant, it's a $70,000 grant, there'll be a special trailer relating to bike education, it's going to pay for some of our volunteers and maybe some staff to get certified as bicycle trainers, so they'll be doing some bike rodeos and things in conjunction with the schools in the Park District. If you remembered, one of our strategic plan or one of our values was about connectivity, and there's a couple of projects we're doing this summer relating to that. If you're familiar with going to Water Street Studios, there's a missing corner, the southeast corner really doesn't have a pedestrian landing, engineering is designing that now, it'll be part of the street program, and it will be put in this summer, so that'll be, help with some connectivity there. With the lack of responses to the Baptist Church, we will bring it in for discussion, but we're planning on repaving the Baptist Church lot, we think that was the direction we received, and that if we didn't have some real activity, that we should do something with that lot, so it at least looks nice to get through the next five or six years, and so we're going to plan on doing that. We would like to talk tomorrow night about the memo I sent out, about the TIF and how that, the finances work, and specifically, we'd like to really start talking about Houston Street because of your, you still want to go ahead with that next year, we want to get the, let the engineers loose on the design, we want to talk about the design of that, that street and get going. And I think that's basically all I have. If anybody has any questions?
Any questions? You indicated that we probably would talk a little bit about the Baptist Church tomorrow night, and I guess I'd just like to throw my two cents in at this point. On that one, Bill and I have talked, you know, I think it's sooner or later, something will show up there that will be very beneficial to the downtown and the area, and that will end up being a positive investment on the parts of the city. In the meantime, I guess, number one, we have that parking lot there that is quite honestly proving to be quite valuable to River Street business and the surrounding area, and I'm really pleased that the city has that parking lot under public control, and as all of you may or may not know, when we originally acquired some of that, that was originally part of a deal where the state of Illinois was going to change the routes of Route 25 and maybe skew it through that block, and then that idea fell by the wayside at the, at the decisions of the State Department of Transportation. So, from that perspective, the city's got this half-block of area there that I think is going to be a nice piece of redevelopment opportunity, if it's not this year or next year, it'll be sometime in the future, but in the meantime, as I think we've already shown, we can put the Baptist Church building, at least portions of it, to somewhat good use in the community, I mean, in December, we used it as a point of distribution for the access toy program, and that's worked very successful for the last three or four years that we've been doing it, and, you know, we've had some other groups talk to, talk in the city about doing some other interesting things in the town, and I'm not going to specifically cite anybody at this moment, but there's, if there's others that would like to, you know, use that, some of that building on an interim basis, maybe there's such a thing as we can work stuff out. I know we have an engineer's report that suggests that we have to be cautious as to how many people we put in the old, original sanctuary of that building, which is basically kind of at a second floor level there, because structurally, the way the building was built in 1880, there is some concerns about how much weight that building in, in modern context it could hold, so we have to be cautious, specifically since we do have an engineer's report in our hands now that tells us not to overload that, that space with people, but that doesn't include the area where we do the toy drive and other types of things, so that building does have some significant function, and then we also are allowing the Batavia Clothes Closet to use it for storage and whatever, so there is almost daily activity taking place there, and I think it's, to this point in time, it's been activity that's been very beneficial to the community of Batavia and serving a number of needs, so I'm not thinking the city council needs to make any apologies to anybody for owning that building for the moment and doing what we are doing with it, and I have full optimism that sooner or later, some nice things will happen to that building. Anything else, Bill?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, going to committee reports, Community Development, Alderman Brown?
Thank you, Your Honor. Bill just mentioned about everything that's on the agenda tomorrow night for CDC, with the exception of one item, and that is, you may remember, I think it was back in November, Mr. Pitts came in and spoke in regard to the Catholic Church addition that was going to be taking place, and had some concerns over the amount of flexibility that staff had regarding design review. That project went on its way and through the normal course of action, but at that time, it was asked that we would revisit that process, and because of the holidays and everything else that's been going on, it intentionally got pushed back until the month of February. So, it is being brought to us tomorrow night for the J.COW to have some conversation about it, and there's recommendations by the staff that have been put forth in a memo, and we can have that discussion. So, the other items, Mr. McGrath already mentioned, so I won't take up any more time. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Okay, Public Utilities, Alderman Clark?
Doesn't look, doesn't look like there's anything scheduled for Public Utilities until February 18th, when there'll be an electric rates discussion, that's tentatively scheduled for that date. Other than that, I have nothing to report, thank you.
Okay, City Services, Alderman Wolf?
Thank you, Your Honor. Tomorrow night on the J.COW agenda, we have a request for qualifications on architectural services for the Government Center, and if you can get everybody here, would like to talk about that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, Government Services, Alderman Sparks?
Thank you, Your Honor. Tomorrow night, February 4th, we have the Gay Tonos Liquor License, and on February 11th, we have liquor code changes discussion. That's all I have.
All right. Anybody on the council have any other business to come up? Nothing else? Okay, moving to the mayor's report. I'll be somewhat brief. I just want to make mention of a couple of people who have left us rather recently. This past Saturday, we had two funerals in town that I'd like to mention. One was in the morning over at the Covenant Church, and that was for James Borman, who was, I believe, a lifelong resident of Batavia. But the reason I want to mention Jim Borman is, is that he, along with his father, Don, for many, many, many years, starting probably right after World War Two, and I think Jim was probably a smaller, his father started, but they continued it for many years at both the Memorial Day service and at the Veterans Day service on November eleventh. The Bormans would always show up, and they owned a public address system, and they would come and set up their public address system so that whoever the speaker and whoever was being remembered on those kind of sacred moments, that the VFW and the American Legion could have services that people could hear what was being said. And, you know, in the life of a community, there's a lot of contributions that citizens make that, you know, I think many people take for granted or don't even know who's doing it. But I just wanted tonight to, you know, since Jim passed away and his funeral was Saturday morning, then I wanted to pay some tribute to the family and to Jim and the work of his father, and for all those years that they showed up using their own equipment to allow Batavians to have a hearable memorial and Veterans Day service. And certainly in the years that, after World War Two, in which I grew up in and several others here grew up in, a lot of those services used to be widely attended because you had a huge number of World War Two veterans that were still alive and quite active in the Batavia community. And I think that, you know, everybody really appreciated that the community paid such high tribute to those folks, and hopefully that's a tradition and in some form or fashion will continue in the future, although the services have kind of changed a little bit in the last few years, and now we do both of them down at the VFW inside. And when the Bormans were helping with it, it was always outside, either up at Batavia Avenue or Wilson Street on, on Veterans Day at the War Memorial, and then on Memorial Day, it was always a service on the Wilson Street Bridge where they threw wreaths into the water. And so, you know, I just thought that that was a significant contribution on their part, and I wanted to specifically remember Jim and his family tonight at the meeting. The other funeral, which was later on Saturday afternoon, was for James "Bill" Wiley, and that was up at the Bethany Lutheran Church, and I wanted to specifically remember Mr. Wiley because kind of in the same context as the Bormans, Mr. Wiley was a veteran of both the World War Two and the Korean War, and after the war, I don't know if he ever physically lived in the city of Batavia, but his wife, I believe, was a Batavia girl. A number of members of his family have lived here. His one daughter is married to Duke Wall, who most of you know, comes to our meetings on occasion. And what I wanted to say about Bill Wiley is, is that Bill, for many years, was the, again, was the master of ceremonies for many of the Memorial Day and Veterans Day services on behalf of the VFW and the American Legion. And he almost became kind of in the latter years, kind of the face of that, and he always did such an extraordinarily, I felt, exceptional job in it in paying tribute and respect to the sensitivities of it, because for a number of years, there were, there were what they called the Gold Star Mothers, which were surviving mothers of soldiers and service people who had been killed in the line of duty. And I remember what, with, what care and compassion that Bill showed toward all those folks on an ongoing basis. And he always made, I always felt, those services to be utmost respectful and sacred to all those who had served so well, and I feel that a lot of the veterans that were there always walked out of there at the end of the day after Bill had kind of mastered ceremony, the thing, and felt very good about their service and what it had meant to Batavia and to the world in general. So those two people I wanted to specifically mention tonight because, again, their contributions to our town while not directly involving the government were really to a very special segment and special moments in our town and its history, and I just thought we should pay some tribute to those two gentlemen. The last thing I wanted to comment about was that, as I mentioned in the prayer, the untimely death of Charlie Gillenwater, and as I said, he was killed in a car accident in southeast Missouri on January third, which is three days after the beginning of this year. Unfortunately, as I understand the circumstances, he also killed in the same accident with him was his brother, and unfortunately, in a car that was right behind him, his wife and his other brother were riding, and they witnessed the terrible tragedy unfold in front of them. And it was just a very bad set of circumstances. I understand that they hit a patch of ice and slid into a bank of trees and got killed that way, so that's what happened. But, you know, I think we need to remember Charlie Gillenwater with a great degree of passion and appreciation, because, you know, he, I remember Dick Hart was the other first ward alderman when, when Charlie got elected to the city council. And when Charlie Gillenwater decided he wanted to be the chairman of what was going to be, the idea they were going to build a River Walk through downtown Batavia. Now, people had talked about that for many years, but we had never gotten this River Walk thing off the ground. And I mean, I think, you know, my initial reaction was, well, here we go again. I hope we can go someplace with it. Well, Charlie jumped in with both feet in the ground, and he had a lot of drive and vision and passion in his heart, and he became very quickly determined that he was going to build this walk. And fortunately, there was some money that was laying in a, an account that was, when the city of Batavia signed a cable TV contract back in the early nineteen eighties. The decision was, is that half of the incentive money that was given to the city for allowing the contract was to be put into a special fund, and that money was to be used in the future to determine, be determined for what use in community benefit. So ten years later, when the River Walk was going to be built, suddenly the idea was, well, let's give them the money from cable TV. So they started out, and they had an initial seed money of almost two hundred thousand dollars out of this. And I got to tell you, Charlie Gillenwater got ahold of that two hundred thousand dollars, and somehow or another, he turned it into about a five hundred thousand dollar pot of money, because suddenly he was getting, you know, Alderman Brown's brother was on the concrete plant down on South River Street, and next thing I know, Batavia Concrete was donating concrete to the River Walk for nothing. And then we had Prairie Material out in the industrial park, and they heard that they were doing it, so then John Oremus called me, and they wanted to donate as much as Batavia Concrete did. And then we had Dennis Kentop show up, and he was starting his construction company, and he was looking for some idea to do. So Charlie Gillenwater was just bringing all these people together and doing this thing. And then as we did it, there really wasn't a, a strong set of plans that had ever been built or designed to show how this whole thing was going to be built. So we would have meetings, and we would say to Charlie, well, it'd be nice if we had a brick sidewalk right next to the city hall. Well, next thing I know, they're out there building a brick sidewalk next to the city hall. And then we got down, and somebody said, you know, that cut used to run between River Rain and the city hall building. Why don't we open up the cut again? So next thing I know, Charlie's got an inverter in here, and I don't think we had any permits from anybody, but we were, we were out there opening up the cut, reconnecting the two channels of the river. And that's just the way this whole thing unfolded. And then we got down south of the Wilson Street Bridge, and there was that area, and we said to Charlie, you know, it'd be nice if we could get this River Walk down to the island park. Well, the next thing I know, they were down there working on that. Now, those of you who are here, many of you helped with this, is you, we started building the River Walk on Saturday mornings with all volunteer groups from churches and service clubs and patriotic organizations and departments of the city and whatever. And every Saturday, some group showed up here that Charlie had recruited in his group, and we got this thing going, and it went on for eight years. And it took eight years to build that River Walk from nineteen ninety to nineteen ninety-eight, but we got it fairly well done, I think, for all the, for what we invested in. At the end of the day, it was, I think, in hard numbers as far as cash, with the initial influx of the money from the cable TV and donations from citizens, we got a little over a million dollars, I think, was donated. But I've had people, if you were to pay for this, it'd be several million dollars, if not more, to do that. And, you know, the beautiful part about Charlie, though, was is that he was an ordained Baptist minister, and that he had some style and mannerisms about him that, there was several occasions when this committee that we had started having great divisionary conversations about, no, I want this here, or I don't want this there, or whatever. I remember one of the great debates was whether or not we were going to put the children's playground out here on the river. And Charlie would get all these warring factions, I will call them, in the, in the committee together, and he'd bring them in and use his ministerial talents and skills, and he'd kind of bring everybody together and get everybody to kind of see the bigger picture and the wider vision, and at the end of the day, it all got done. I mean, that was the real blessing of Charlie Gillenwater's leadership, was he had this kind of, this ministerial compassion about him that kind of got everybody through their angst of being mad about this or their hard idea, and things came together. So, you know, the end of the day, well, what I wanted to say about Alderman Hart was, is that it came time to get the thing done, and we got it done, and we were going to have the dedication, and the next thing I'm told, he didn't, he never talked to me or anything. He sent me, I believe, a letter of resignation, that he was leaving the city council, and that he was moving from Batavia, and before I could even act, he apparently had the car or the truck filled up, and he moved, and he was gone. And it was like, you know, we never said goodbye. He never, he would, apparently he wasn't mad. He just, he just, he had some job opportunity down in Missouri, I guess, and the way he went. So Dick Hart, one night at the city council says, you know, I think we need to analogize Charlie Gillenwater to the Long Ranger. He rode into Batavia in a blaze of glory, and there was all this stuff that needed to be accomplished, and he organized it all, righted all the wrongs, and got everything all done. And then, before it was over with, the time to take any of the credit or the applause, he just disappeared into the sunset, just like the Long Ranger did. And so, you know, in some respects, I didn't think that was a bad analogy on Dick Hart's part, that Charlie was the Long Ranger, and he just disappeared into the night. And away he went. So I'm very, very sorry for what happened to Charlie, and, you know, we already have a street named in his honor out in the far southeast side of town, and he was citizen of the year, and I believe, I forget what year now it was, right, late nineteen nineties. And he was, he had some honors on, from Batavia during his time here, but he was here for maybe nine, ten years at the most, and then before it was done, it was gone. And I have pictures of the dedication of the River Walk, and we're all standing there cutting ribbons, and Charlie Gillenwater is nowhere to be seen because he had already rode off into the sunset. So at the end of the day, I just have very fond and nice memories of Charlie and his service to Batavia. And he truly was an individual who rode into this town and really did some outstanding good work, and left a permanent mark on Batavia, because I got to believe that that River Walk will be there for generations yet to come, because people now use it and enjoy it and realize the beauties of the river, and it really has opened up, you know, what had been somewhat of an abused natural resource in town for a long time. It, it really turned, kind of turned the corner and made us all realize what a great asset we, that we had here. So on Charlie's behalf, we have a lot to thank him for, so I just wanted to make some comments about. Alderman Brown, you want to say something?
I, I do. I, you know, as you say, you know, I can remember when I got on the city council, Charlie was here, and, and he was a council member that just, everybody, you know, he made everybody feel at home. He was one of those guys that, at that time, we had committee structure, and, you know, as, as you know, some of our committees got pretty heated and argumentative and such, and Charlie just had his way of just making everybody kind of pull together and say, now, boys, let's, you know, let's talk about this a little bit and, and make it work. So as far as the council goes, I had nothing but the utmost respect for him. And as far as the River Walk goes, yeah, he and, he and Alderman Snyder talked me into one day bringing a couple machines down here with the company I was with at that time, and we completely graded out everything on that side of the building from, from the plaza down to the cut, and got it all ready for the River Walk to go in there, and, and graded everything out on that side over there. And, and he got the momentum going with me so much that I said, well, let me get the guys down here. We'll put all the curb in. And, and he said, no, I already got that taken care of. And I said, no, but I want to do it. And he said, no, but I got that taken care of. And he was just a real motivator, I guess you could say, and just a real friendly guy. So he's going to certainly be missed. Sorry to hear.
He resigned before his term. I don't know if it was, was it, one of you got appointed, I think, to fill his, you, you were appointed to fill his?
It was her.
No.
No, that was, um.
Jody?
Because he sat over there.
Okay, yeah, okay, it was before, yeah, it was Jody?
No, John, it was John, John Hankis.
John Hankis?
John Hankis.
Yeah, he was there.
And then John left right about the time that I got on the council.
Okay. Yeah, there's been a lot come and go here, so it's hard to remember them all. But, I mean, he, we did, we did have to fill the vacancy in the first ward when, again, Charlie disappeared into the night and the way he went, and with all this good work he had done. So Charlie, may you rest in peace, because you certainly did make a positive difference on the community of Batavia. Okay, no further business. Alderman Brown, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
We adjourn the city council meeting.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman O'Brien. Kirk, take a voice vote.
Oh, those in favor?
Aye.